Good evening, everyone. Sorry a few minutes late. Having some technical difficulties. We will call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge May 28, 2020, 6:00 PM to order. I'd like Danny Lance, True Life Church, and one of our police chaplains to lead us in our implication and/or provide an implication that leads us in our place. If anyone wants to stand. Heavenly Father, these are indeed unique times and frankly, a little bit frightening at times, but we take comfort in knowing that you are with us, even in difficult times, and that you know the way ahead. And Lord, we also want to take just a second to say thank you for all of the many blessings that are in our lives in this great nation we live in, as well as this great community. And Lord, my prayer tonight is for wisdom for our leaders. Lord, I pray you would not only help them to make good decisions in difficult times, but Lord, I pray for leaders across this lit nation and across this world that right now are facing some of the most difficult questions ever. And I know, Lord, that you know the answers. And I just pray for your guidance and your help. I pray for your comfort and peace for the constituents of East Ridge, as well as the surrounding communities. And I pray most of all, Lord, for your hand of healing and protection over our community. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Lance. Roll call, Ms. calls.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Cagle?
Here.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Here.
Councilmember Witt?
Here.
City Manager Dorsey?
Here.
City Attorney Litchford?
Here.
All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Is everyone... Thank you for keeping me on track. First time I forgot this. Is everyone aware we're still conducting our meetings via electronic means via Governor and Lee's newest executive order number 34, which will remain in effect until the end of the day, June 30? And I'll hand it off to City Attorney Litchford.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of the state of emergency that was declared by the governor in connection there. He had also put in an executive order, executed order number 16, that was extended by executive order 34, allowing meetings being conducted via electronic means for public meetings. And so, one of the things that we have been asked, Ms. Middleton, is that you reflect in the record that in this case, it was necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. And therefore, they will reflect that that this body has made a determination based upon state of emergency that it was important or necessary for the protection of citizens to have this via virtual electronic means.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for reminding me. Now, we move to the consent agenda. Hope that everyone's had a chance to review the minutes of the May 14, 2020 regular council meeting and the financial statement of March 2020. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Hilton. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. calls.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
All right, we'll move into communications from citizens. Since there's no opportunity for live citizen comment during this meeting, any citizen desiring to address the city, council had an opportunity to submit their comments via email to me at mayor@eastridgetennessee.gov from 12:30 to 1:30 today. And as always, please keep in mind, any citizen or business owner may contact the city, the council, city manager, or myself at any point in time. There was no communications from citizens at this point in time today, so we will now move on into communications from council members. I'll go with Councilmember Witt.
Okay. We're still working on the census. We've got 61.8%, which we are above the nation and Tennessee because both the nation and Tennessee is just 60.3%. That's about all that I know.
Thank you. Councilmember Chauncey?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Cagle?
Yes, sir. I was out eating the other night at one of our local restaurants. Someone came up to me and wanted me to thank the city as a whole for keeping the track open down at Camp Jordan Park because he thoroughly enjoys one of our work.
Awesome. Vice Mayor Hilton?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I only have just a couple of things kind of related. So, I would like to thank Kroger, Cherokee Health, and Hamilton County Health Department, who actually helped with facilitating the free drive-in for the COVID-19 testing. That occurred... The first round occurred Wednesday, May 20, through Friday, May 22. And then, they had another round that actually went this week. It was actually yesterday and today, if I'm not mistaken, the 27th or 28th. So, we really appreciate partnering with Kroger and Cherokee Health, along with our Hamilton County Health Department, to provide free testing in our area. I think that's probably all that I have. And I'll pass it over to City Manager Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this time you took one of my items, so it's getting a little better. I do want to thank Kroger and Cherokee Health and the Hamilton County Health Department for the COVID-19 testing last week and the two days this week. Every time I pop over at Camp Jordan, there was always a line of cars waiting to be tested, so they've had a very good response. The mayor says, "I can't throw out a rumor that Kroger's come to East Ridge," but they're not. But we were very... Yes, that's right. But we're very thankful for them coming into our community and providing this public service for us. It was very well received. And once again, like I said, we just want to thank them very much for that. Brush pickup, I apologize, Kenny. Our Assistant City Manager Custer is out of town today. But I do know that the pickup is going very well. The additional equipment that we have has made a big difference in helping get all the brush picked up. We should be hopefully hitting some of the other areas of the city. If... I've had a few calls. If we haven't been to your area, we should be hitting your area soon. Like I said, we've been hitting the hardest-hit areas first and also the areas that have large piles of store debris. A lot of the weekend trimming, because everybody's been home, a lot of that, I know, has been sitting on the side of the road still. Of course, we'll be concentrating on the larger piles, getting those up first. Actually, I had an online meeting with FEMA/TIMA this week to start discussing the fund paperwork and financial side of all this. We have another meeting scheduled beginning of June to keep looking into what we need to be doing to make sure we fill out all of our paperwork correctly that we need to. And it's been a long day. I want to ask Stan if he wouldn't mind. He wanted me to say something, and I'll all screw it up. So, if Chief Allen would please come up here and make his announcement about the blood drive, I believe.
Yes, Mayor, Council, Police Department contacted Blood Assurance, and next Wednesday, June 3, from noon till 6 o'clock, one of their blood mobile donation buses will be at the Police Department for blood donations. And everybody, citizens, employees, everybody is welcome to donate.
Can you repeat that, June?
June the 3rd, that is next Wednesday, and it's from noon until 16:00.
Noon to 6:00, I was trying to get it wrote down, and I didn't. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chief. The last thing, we have been working with our safety officer to make sure we have some policies and procedures in place, but we're looking towards opening up City Hall the first week of June, probably June 1st, if we have everything in place. So, that'll be good. So, the staff isn't too happy with that because they'll have to dress back up a little bit. Getting a little casual over the last couple of weeks and getting comfortable. But we're looking forward to getting back open and to try to get as close as we can back to normal. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll tag on... Sorry, I already gave my opportunity, but yeah, let me thank the sanitation department. I'm getting emails and messages about the brush pickup, and I tell them to be patient. There's a lot, and we're working through it, but we appreciate it. And then, we're also... I'll mention that me and the city manager are kind of discussing a tentative reopening council meeting. So, we don't have anything at this point in time, but we're looking to try to get those reopened so we can have citizens back in a controlled, following the CDC guidelines and stay in the local guidelines. We don't have anything yet, but that's to come. Moving to old business, which we have done, so we'll pass through that and go into new business. Item A, ordinance number 1128.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the fiscal year 2020 operating budget, ordinance number 1105, for various revenues and expenditures, and to designate a portion of the fund balance to be used.
And this should be... Okay. This should be... This is our final one of the year, where we're doing our cleanup to make sure everything... That every department is within their lines and to take care of any of the last-minute purchases that have been made. We are in the solid waste, you'll see, where we are... Where we show using more fund balance, where we have purchased the knuckle boot and the skid loader... Loader, whatever. The big piece of equipment. And we still have not received our insurance, but I got a call from them today, so I'll call them back tomorrow to find out what the final total is on the knuckle boot that was burned up. Because they were negotiating with the insurance companies of the other two, the Eagle Fleet, and then also the gas company that owned the truck. But the numbers may change a little bit because of whatever we're coming up with here in... Gee, so that's why we will do second reading the end of the month.
So, we may be adjusted for the second reading?
Right.
So, we may skip the meeting and do the second reading at the end of the year just to make sure all the last-minute...
I see what you're thinking of. Okay.
Question. Is this insurance recovery coming from our insurance company? Or is it coming from where the on-site road truck was burning?
Coming from our insurance company, and they segregate, correct?
Yeah, they're segregating it for us. Yes.
So, they'll settle them, and they'll take care of them?
Because they know what they have it valued at, our insurance, and then they would give us that minus $1,000 deductible. But then, whatever they settle with with the other companies, will come back to us also. Don't make that move, that's what they get... That's what we kind of pay them for. I'm careful busy.
All right. I will entertain a motion for ordinance number 1128.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1128.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. calls.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Ordinance number 1128 passed first read. I'll move to item B, resolution number 3050.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to elect members to the East Ridge Industrial Development Board.
Thank you, sir. What I want to do on item B, we've got two separate appointments to secure names, and then we have the resolution. So, I would like to break this one... Not breaking the agenda, I'm just breaking up the voting for the resolution of the names of the members. So, we have two. One, we have two that we need to secure names for. One is a position that is coming up for reappointment, and that one that is Curtis Baker. His session is coming to an end. I had emailed the council members last week and asked for names for this council appointment. They have been submitted to me. I've got two names submitted. One is Curtis Baker, and the other one is Casey Tuggle. But also, I said, you know, that doesn't prevent anyone from adding any additional names during the council meeting. So, I will go around and ask if there's any other names that would like to be added for consideration. I don't have any, but I'll go around the council. I'll start here with Councilmember Cagle. Do you have any?
Me neither.
Okay, you got one, okay. Vice Mayor Hilton? Do you have any more?
I don't have any. I don't have anybody.
Okay. Councilmember Witt?
I would like to nominate Casey Tuggle. I feel like that he would be a good asset to that committee.
Okay, well, let me get... So, you...
Is that appropriate?
Well, let me hold on that motion. Let me get with... Let me ask Councilwoman Chauncey if she has anyone, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Cagle?
Mayor, I didn't...
Councilwoman Cagle, Chauncey, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Chauncey, do you have anyone else to add?
No, sir, I don't have anyone else.
Okay, all right. All right, so Councilwoman Witt, was you making a motion earlier?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Casey Tuggle.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion from Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Chauncey for Casey Tuggle. Does any discussion? Roll call, Ms. calls.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
It dispels you, though.
Councilmember Cagle?
I have nothing against Mr. Tuggle, but I would like to stay promoted because I have a motion I'd like to put in.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
So, what do we have there? We have Thor and Usain, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have the council name with a Casey Tuggle. So, I will then move to Vice Mayor Hilton's appointment. That was Danny Lance. He's at field position, and he's actually now... His term has expired, so Vice Mayor Hilton, do you have a name you want to submit?
Yes, I would like to reappoint Mr. Danny Lance, and I'd just like to thank him for his willingness to serve. And he agreed that he would like to serve.
All right, I'd like to sue you on a motion for the appointment of Danny Lance.
Okay, I make a...
Approve. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. The way I heard it was, I've got a motion for Danny Lance for Councilmember Chauncey and a second by Vice Mayor Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. calls.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Okay. So, now we went through the process, and we have the two names. So, Thor, do we want to re-read Resolution 3050 with inserting the names, or do you...
Right, yeah, let's read this to clarify what we heard. This was a resolution that was drawn up, and it... Because there were two appointments that were going to be elected upon tonight. The first one was with regard to the city council-wide election, which Councilwoman Witt moved to add or to appoint and elect Mr. Tuggle. That was seconded by Mr. Chauncey, Councilmember Chauncey, and that passed on a 4 to 0 to 1 vote. And then, the second part of this resolution was to memorialize the appointment of Vice Mayor Hilton, which of course was Danny Lance, and that passed 5 to 0. So, let's read this to confirm the Resolution 3050, since it's got both appointments in here that work out clarity as to what actually occurred and connected with this resolution. So, this is Resolution 3050. A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to elect Casey Tuggle as the at-large city council appointment and to memorialize the appointment of Danny Lance by Vice Mayor Hilton.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3050 as read.
Make a motion to approve. Resolution 3050.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Hilton and a second by Councilmember Chauncey. Do we have any discussion?
I did have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, Matt Penley, we are appointing Casey Tuggle in place of Mr. Penley? Is that accurate, or is that Casey Tuggle in place of Curtis Baker?
It would be in place of Curtis. Curtis Baker.
Okay. And then, for the replacement for Mr. Penley?
He is not a... He's still... He'll still be a member.
Okay, I got it, okay.
Yeah, we had Mr. Lance filling in temporarily for, I think, Rick Torick.
Yes.
And that term was up, so Mr. Lance got reappointed. And then, the at-large for the council was Curtis Baker, and now it's been named and voted on for Casey Tuggle.
Okay, I'm straightened out now, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we roll call, Ms. calls?
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
I'm going to stay on Mr. Tuggle and vote yes on Mr. Danny Lance.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
All right. Item C, resolution number 3051.
A resolution of the City Council for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with Dynamic East Ridge LLC relating to a project in the Border Region Retail Development District and authorizing certain actions relating there to. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is a matter that was requested by the developer, Dynamic East Ridge LLC, as a result of the COVID virus, what appears to be placing a bit of a delay on the starting and will ultimately be the completion. It's... They still target that a completion date will be in December of 2021, but they want to just make sure that they don't miss that. And so, they just asked for a force majeure provision to be included into the agreement. Force majeure provisions are not uncommon in contractual practice. It's just we didn't have one in here. And so, in connection with discussing with them, it does not impact the city, one way or another, from a distribution standpoint if this developer opens in December of 2021 or if they open in May of 2022. It doesn't... From a distribution standpoint, it doesn't make a difference. So, obviously, we want to get the sales tax as soon as possible, and of course, they do, too. So, it doesn't impact the city from that standpoint. It just allows them the freedom to be able to have an extension on the completion date to January 30, to June 30. And in that case, they would be open by July 1 for the first full year of the fiscal year 2223.
All right, thank you, sir. I have a question, but I'm going to reserve that until discussion. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3051.
I make a motion to approve 3054.
3051.
3051.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion? All right, so the questions that I have, this is pertaining strictly to COVID-19-related delay.
Right, so let me get through it and pull that over. And yeah, the new section's going to be if it's delayed as a result of the COVID-19 or Governor of Tennessee's Declaration of a State of Emergency. And so, those are the two bases of which...
Not just any type of delay can cause this, okay?
Correct.
And to your point, this move... This allowing the completion from the 31st of 2021, December 2021, to June 30, 2022, doesn't impact a border region? It still has to be...
That's right. From a city collection, it's going to keep the border region, whether it starts in December, January. The time period for the developer to receive this portion would be for the period of fiscal year 2223.
Correct, okay. Let me clarify that. No other discussion? Roll call, Ms. calls.
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey?
Yes.
Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 3051 passed. Item D, resolution 3052.
A resolution of the City Council for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for and acceptance of the State of Tennessee CARES Grant for the East Ridge Library.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The librarians at our library came to me with this grant, and it is COVID-related through the CARES Grant Act that's been going around. They are available to get $20,000, and it's no match required for some things that will help the patrons. Couple of those things are, they want to purchase four hotspots that they can actually circulate just like they would a book. And we would have paid service for the hotspot Um, and we would have paid service for the hotspot through this, uh, grant until May 31st of 2021, uh, four Chromebooks. So that way, again, patrons that usually normally use our computers, if they don't have a way to do it at home, this way they can check one of these Chromebooks out and still be able to use the internet. And then also the Adobe Office Office and C, so that where the librarians can, you know, keep up with some programs that they've been doing, doing a job at, um, some of the online distance learning type programs they've been doing on Facebook. So, um, they just want to continue that. And this is due on June 15th, so that's why it is kind of a time sensitive matter.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3052.
So, the mayor, I make a motion to adjourn from the motion, 3052.
Second.
Uh, you have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Hilton. Roll call, Miss, well, let me ask, is there any discussion? Sorry. Roll call, Miss Schools?
Vice Mayor Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Chauncey? Councilmember Chauncey?
I'll raise the hand.
Wait, you're on mute. Got a thumbs up.
Okay. Councilmember Witt?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Item E, Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. If you're not, uh, if you're not speaking, Council, please put your, please put yourself on mute. We get a little background noise. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Literally. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to, uh, present to the, the council tonight, the, um, fiscal year 2021, um, operating budget. Uh, for those that all knew it's not as presenting it, um, uh, for those that obviously don't have it yet because you are, uh, participating via electronic means, there'll be a copy in your boxes for you to come pick up at your lab. Uh, there'll also be a copy put on the, uh, the website tomorrow as well. The budget's a little different this year. I wanted to sort of do something like this last year, but of course I was here, what, two weeks and the budget was presented, even though I was here ahead of time, we didn't have time to do anything. I believe a budget is supposed to be a citizen-friendly document, a document that helps communicate what the city is doing, um, through its dollars and cents, uh, to the, uh, citizens and to the community. Uh, with that in mind, uh, this is our first stab at, um, at this type of budget and, uh, hopefully we'll just be able to approve it as the years go on. The way it's set up, instead of just having a spreadsheet, the parts of the spreadsheet are actually, um, divided up among the various, excuse me, various departments that we have in the city. So there's literally a page on every single department that we have. And on some of the larger ones, you'll see some, uh, information dealing with, uh, trends that they're dealing with, dealing with, um, other things of, of that nature, might find a page. Like issues and trends, um, there's demand measures in here of, of different things that they're doing, um, things of that nature. So hopefully the citizens will find it interesting and the council will find it interesting to, uh, to read through some of this document. All the same information that you had in your, your just regular spreadsheet is all still here. Uh, it's just been a more user-friendly and actually this used to be a, what was called a GFOA budget format, um, for Government Finance Officers of America. It's similar to what I had used, God, 20 years ago in, when I was the budget manager for the whole city of Memphis, uh, we used something very similar to this that we had developed back then. And it's amazing what you can do with Excel and Word documents and combining and doing those sort of things. Uh, what I'd like to do real quick is read the, my budgets, the statement that I have in here, the overview dealing with the budget. The economy is now in the midst of recession due to COVID-19. Consequently, the city of East Ridge has been careful and selective in the preparation of the fiscal year 2021 budget request. The fiscal year 21 revenue picture looks dimmer than previous years. The city is projecting a flat year of little revenue growth over the 2020 budget. The above revenue projection does not include the monetary increase in the border region allocation from the state, which is mostly just a pass-through to the eligible businesses. The border region has been helpful in allowing East Ridge to weather this economic turndown. A few restaurants and entertainment venues are still under construction and will open in the upcoming fiscal year, which will result in increased property tax and sales tax revenue for the city. A planned use of fund balance in the amount of 646,000 is again needed for this fiscal year. To, to, uh, to make sure I make this point, these funds are carryovers of two projects that you also had to fund balance for this year, which was not used because the projects are still ongoing. Uh, there's 500,000 for the Pioneer Playground and Splash Pad and the city's match of 146,000 for the multimodal project, um, on Ringel Road. The revenue sources will be monitored during the year to track any changes due to unexpected economic shifts. These budgets were prepared at a maintenance level. Landfill disposal costs have remained contractually steady. However, the city now has to pay for recycling due to the flooding of the market with materials. Hamilton County's consolidated 911 and dispatch funding remains steady. Division requests for increased expenditures were evaluated and funded according to immediate need. These increases include a 3% increase in the cost of health insurance for city employees. Since the city of East Ridge's main sources of revenues continue to be in order, property tax, local sales tax and state share taxes, the economic downturn has lowered the amount of state share taxes. With the economic makeup of East Ridge being primarily a bedroom community, our main, dependent and reliable source of rev, revenue continues to be and will always be property taxes. Most apartments of the city have been cutting expenses from their budgets over the last few years to avoid a property tax increase. The city of East Ridge prides itself on being a very resident and business-friendly city and providing a high level of service with a minimum amount of taxes. However, in extreme circumstances, when other dependable sources of revenue are shrinking, are shrinking, our economic base suffers and decisions must be made to safeguard the welfare of our city. With this in mind and realizing the economic difficulty that many of our citizens are facing this year, the city of East Ridge will continue holding expenditure growth to a minimum. There will be no cost of living increase for employees proposed in this year's budget. We will be watching the economic conditions after the first and second quarter to see if revenues rebound to the point of being able to propose a monetary increase for our employees. The budget as presented requires no property tax increase. Pause for effect, okay? The city of East Ridge is optimistic about the financial future of our great city and is pleased to present the fiscal year 2021 operating budget. And the actual amount for our 2021 request is 15,755,978 dollars. So tonight we were just presenting the budget, Mayor, as we, as we talked about earlier, and we just need to go ahead and set a time for a budget workshop so that after, um, the council gets a chance to review through the budget, we can have some questions they may have. Thank you.
So let me thank you and all the department heads and staff in preparing this. I know this is not an easy feat. It takes a lot of effort, a lot of, uh, late nights and, um, a lot of time. So, uh, we definitely appreciate, uh, and I like the new format. So with that being said, I would like to move to see if this council would like to go ahead and establish a budget workshop session in the near future? Or if you want to try to, um, reconvene and try to establish something, uh, later this week or early next week? I'd prefer to go ahead and try to set something if we can, since we have everybody's attention. Do we want to look at something next week or do we want to look at the week following when we, right before the, the next council meeting?
I'd like to have the week, this week to look at this, to ask DM questions on, on the side.
So.
And then maybe schedule something next week.
Well, this week is just tomorrow?
No, I'm talking about.
Okay, so you want another full week?
Another full week, yes.
Okay. All right.
And as, and as Councilman Cagle knows, we have, we have plenty of time too because your first reading is just, you have to have two readings of the budget anyway. The first reading is just procedural. So we still have plenty of time before we have the second reading to be able to have workshops if people.
Yeah, you can ask in the workshop. I know you, a lot of times prefer just do it one, one off, but some other people have the same question. So, uh, so is everyone good with week after next then? Which is the week of council?
I'm agreeing.
Okay, I see those up. My, um, Vice Mayor Hilton, how's your schedule look? Are you in Nashville?
I will be. Um, they told us to possibly, might possibly be there through, uh, June 19th.
So if we had it.
The best day would be on the Friday for me because likely we will be home sometime on Friday, so like Thursday or Friday.
So you're out Monday through Thursday?
I'm sorry?
You're out Monday through Thursday in Nashville?
Yes, I will be next week, possibly Friday next week. I'm, I'm not for certain.
I was going to shoot.
We'll know more, we'll know more next week how things are going to progress.
Okay, I was maybe thinking if we could do Friday the 5th, if that would give Councilman Cagle enough time, but we're not sure Vice Mayor Hilton would be able to be back.
We'd always have the Zoom on for her if she wants to listen in.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Hilton, what if we shoot for the 5th and then if you need to attend via Zoom? That be acceptable with you?
Uh, well, it depends on what time. If I, if I'm in Nashville on Friday, I would be having, probably having committee meetings or a session. So I don't know that we're be able to attend because.
Would that be all day or half a day?
It, it would, I don't know.
Okay.
I really can't say. Go ahead and put it down for the 5th. I'll know more about how things are going to progress by ne, by probably Tuesday of next week.
Okay. Um, Councilman Cagle, what are your thoughts on maybe the 5th? That give you enough time?
That gives you a week.
Okay. Um, then what time? Do you want to shoot for, um, an afternoon? I'm looking at the city of three-ish? Cause I hate for you guys have to stay late. You've already put in so much overtime and, and late hours getting this.
We get 10 o'clock in the morning. That's, no, I'm just kidding. I think 3:00, 3:00 is probably a good time.
I'd prefer 10:00 in the morning, but.
Yeah.
3:00, and how long you think it will take? Couple hours for, if we need to have another session?
I would say max, couple hours.
Okay. 3:00, 5th? Is that good with everybody?
I'm agreeing.
My thumbs up? Okay. Esther, just, uh, Vice Mayor Hilton, just let us know on the, on that timing before we shoot.
I will, I'll let you know.
All right. So we're going to do June 5th, 3 PM. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item F, which is going to be the discussion of the tentative agenda for June 11th, 2020 council meeting. On that, we will have the potentially, correct? Potentially the second reading for ordinance number 1128, the ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. Ordinance number 1105 for various revenues and expenditures and to designate a portion of the fund balance to be used.
No, we're going to use it from, that one we'll do it like next, not this week, but the next week.
So this one will be, um.
June 12.
12?
Yeah.
June 12.
So that'll be June 12.
It's going to be a long hours.
All right, so that will not be in the old business for.
Like we said, Mayor, we just think that, that might, you know.
I agree.
Normally we would have the next one, but just with the economic circumstances and the way spending is going, we just want to make sure we get the best.
We'll push it, okay. Underneath business, we have an unnumbered ordinance on item A, an ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee making and fixing the annual appropriations of several departments of the city for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 30th, 2021.
That's a fancy way of saying it's the budget ordinance.
Okay.
But not as long as last year's. We, we, we heard Mr. Litchford's cries for help last year of the extremely long captions that Diane had for these items, these two items, so I shortened them.
And I appreciate that too. Cause I read them in the tentative agenda. Any discussion on that? Okay. Item B, another unnum, unnumbered ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee to provide for the general revenue thereof for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, to be known as a general revenue ordinance for said year. It'll be the first reading.
So this is basically the, the funding mechanism of the property tax. This is the property tax ordinance.
Okay.
For the revenue.
Thank you, sir. Any discussions, council?
No tax increase.
No tax increase. I see none. We'll move to item C, an unnumbered resolution, Governors of Local Government Support Grants.
Yes, Mayor, this is the, um, the, the one that Governor Lee, uh, put out, um, was a month, I have to go down?
So.
Um, for the communities in, in Tennessee. Um, we have 493,000 and change, correct? That there are specific categories we can use this on. Um, the, the application period started in April, no, goes all the way until April of 2021. But we want to go ahead and get a, um, a resolution in, um, in June on this item. We're, we're debating, I think I mentioned this last time, um, some of the items that we might be able to use on, uh, to use this for, deal with infrastructure and, uh, some, some needs we have around here and, uh.
And this one will be handled through the comptroller's office. It's going to be different from the others, it'll be going to finance. Get to be talking to my friends.
Okay.
Yes.
Any discussion, council? I see none. That's all the new business. Do we have anything that we should add, need to add to tentative agenda?
Just the lecture.
I see none.
Good.
All right, I appreciate everyone. Thank you very much. Have a very great evening and great weekend. Meeting adjourned.